Well, hello. Today is Saturday, October 24th, 2020. This is the Victoria City Council Candidate Town Hall Forum. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon to those of you that are watching this Town Hall Forum via the YouTube Live feed or from a recording, I say, welcome. Also, my deepest appreciation to the three city council candidates from Victoria who have agreed to participate in today's forum. Allow me to introduce them to you at this time. First, Mr. Derek Gunderson.
Aye.
Next, Mr. Chad Roberts.
Afternoon.
And Mr. Tom Gregory.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. I'm Denny Laufenberger, and I will serve as moderator for this afternoon's forum. Joining me here at the officials' table, Eric Margolis, who will act as timer for this event. In just a few minutes, we'll begin our forum with opening statements from each of the candidates in a sequence determined earlier this month. After the opening statements, I will ask a series of questions taken from input by email from Victoria residents. We won't be able to ask every question that was submitted, but those of you that are watching and did submit questions, you may hear yours asked this afternoon. The sequence of responses for tonight's forum has been provided to the candidates ahead of time, but the questions have not. And to remove any partiality on my part with the questions, I'll ask the candidate who is to answer first to choose a number between one and 10, and that is the question to be answered for that round. Following the questions, we will hear closing statements from each candidate. And at the conclusion, the forum will then be posted as a recording on the same website at which you are watching this live feed. Just a reminder, candidates, you will have a minute and a half, that's 90 seconds, for your statements and your answers. Eric will remind you when your time is approaching the end and will give you a stop when your time expires. I ask that you please respect the other candidates by responding within the time allowed. With that introduction, let's begin with opening statements, starting with council candidate, Mr. Derek Gunderson. Derek, you have 90 seconds.
Well, thank you, Denny, and thank you, Eric, for putting on the forum. As a council member, my priorities will be, first of all, the bones of our community. And the bones are what we refer to as infrastructure. The infrastructure must be planned, maintained, and repaired in a way that keeps our plows on time, our sewers functioning, and our first responders able to respond. Not very exciting stuff, but all absolutely necessary. Second, our local businesses must know that we have their backs. While I will always look to maintain the character of our community, we must find sustainable ways to assist growth. For example, parking in and around downtown is a concern shared by many. Let's fix it. Third, we must support policies that broaden our commercial tax base. Too much of our burden is on the Victoria homeowner. To do this, we must entice commercial businesses, but we must also look to expand our housing stock, creating options for Victoria seniors. Fourth, as a two-term member of Victoria's Finance Committee, I have always been concerned with how our money is spent. Every member of the council must be able to tell you how our dollars are being spent, the value and the value of what those dollars are. And finally, our families, probably my biggest priority. The city council is not the school board, nor do we have our own police department. So we must do everything we can to ensure there are always open lines of communication and good working relationships between our, between other governing bodies, those that we contract with and their staff. Victoria does not function in a bubble. Our words and our actions affect others, whether we intend for them or not. I look forward to working with you as your next councilman.
Thank you, Derek. Next, Mr. Chad Roberts. You have 90 seconds, Chad.
Thank you. Thank you, Denny, Eric, and everyone else who played a role in setting up today's forum. Thank you also to Derek and Tom for joining me today. Most importantly, thank you to the, special thanks to the residents of Victoria. This is all for you. Thank you for watching, and I hope this will be informative to you. My wife Kate and I and our two children, Mamush and Scarlett, moved to Victoria five years ago. Victoria is our home, and I want our community to continue to grow and thrive without losing that small-town feel that many of us moved here for. I am not a politician. I'm just a guy who wants to do right by his city. In my job as a manager within the Risk Management Department of one of the top intellectual property law firms in the nation, I deal with complex legal issues every day. What I have learned from my 19 years with the same law firm is I'm not always going to have the answer. What I do have are the tools to come to an informed decision. First, I will always rely on the people, the residents of Victoria, and the staff within the city. You all know what is going on in our city, and I want to hear your opinions and your concerns. Second, I will do my homework on the issues at hand. I am notorious for staying up late hours doing research, whether it's for my work, my son's basketball team, or the latest gadget one of my kids or I want. I will put in the time and effort for you. Finally, I will use what I learned to come to a conclusion that I believe is in the best interest of Victoria. The reality, reality is, this job is not about me. It is about you and what's in the best interest of our city. I hope you'll give me that opportunity on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Next, the incumbent, Mr. Tom Gregory. Tom, you have 90 seconds.
Good afternoon, and first of all, thank you, Denny and Eric, for organizing this event. My name is Tom Gregory. I am married to my wonderful wife, Teresa. We have three children. I grew up in Victoria. Teresa and I made Victoria our permanent home when we purchased our grandmother's home in 32 years ago. Teresa and I are small business owners. We have owned and operated Victoria Care Center for the past 25 years. I also work part-time as a classroom instructor for Safeway Driving School. Prior to the pandemic, I taught most of my classes at Chaska and Chan-Hassan High School. I'm a lifelong member of St. Victoria Church. I've served on the city council for nearly four years. I'm very proud of the work we've done on the council. I consider myself a strong fiscal conservative, but I also recognize the importance of making good financial investments in our city. I'm very, I'm proud of the fact that we've maintained our AAA bond rating, and we've kept our tax capacity rate flat for the past four years. At the same time, we've made substantial investments in our community. One of my goals when I ran for this office in 2016 was to make sure that we had a city hall that represents all of Victoria residents, a city hall where all voices are heard, welcomed, and respected. And by all measures, I firmly believe that is exactly what we have accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Now we move to our questions portion. I have 10 questions. Tom, you will be answering the first question, so you get to choose a number between one and 10. Choose wisely.
Number one.
All right, number one. Key attributes of successful council members. As you consider the office for which you are running, can you describe two or three attributes or skills that you possess that make you the best qualified for this council member role? And if elected, how will you apply these skills to make Victoria a better place for all people to live, work, build a business, raise a family, and retire comfortably? You have 90 seconds, Tom.
Thank you. First of all, I'm a good listener. I enjoy meeting with people, listening to people. I'm a small business owner. I've, my family has been entrepreneurs, and when you're a small business owner, you have to wear pretty many hats. And I think that that serves me well on the council, that you deal with innumerable issues and, which is similar to small business owners. So I think applying those, using that, listening, meeting people, reaching out to people, getting to know more people, I think those are good qualities that have served me well and will continue to. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Our next responder is Derek Gunderson. Would you like me to repeat the question, Derek?
I think I got it. Key attributes of a successful councilman?
Mm-hmm, and how you apply them. Thank you. 90 seconds.
Thank you. First off, being collaborative is something that I do as a small business owner myself in my day-to-day work, bringing in information from not just one, two, or three, but many different sources, oftentimes with competing points of view or competing perspectives, and being able to digest all that information to try to offer solutions to my clients. And the solutions could be wide-ranging in how they deal with the general public or how they deal with an internal issue within their own organization. So I think being able to be collaborative and understanding where a lot of people are coming from and being able to listen to them and their concerns, but also digesting that information and getting it out in a way that's constructive and makes people feel like their opinion has been heard, that they've actually been listened to, and that when it comes down to it, they feel that they can come to us, even though I may not agree all the time. They know that I'll at least listen. The second one would be, you've got to have a lot of energy. You've got to have energy to be able to deal with the multiple different things you're going to deal with, being able to move from one topic to the next while being on point for each different range. So again, as a small business owner, that's something I deal with. I've shifted from my own personal finances to dealing with a public engagement issue with a client. So I think I'm pretty equipped, just in my day-to-day life, to handle what I think the council is going to bring at me on a week-to-week, month-to-month, day-to-day basis.
All right, thank you, Derek. Next, Chad Roberts. Would you like me to repeat the question, Chad?
Sure.
Okay. As you consider the office for which you are running, can you describe two or three attributes or skills that you possess that make you the best qualified for this council member role? And if elected, how will you apply them to make Victoria a better place for all people to live, work, build a business, raise a family, and retire comfortably? You have 90 seconds, Chad.
Yeah, I think Derek and Tom touched on one of them, but listening, I think, is definitely a key attribute that I possess. You know, we, we have to listen to the people. As Derek said, you might not always agree with them, but we need to listen and understand what their concerns are in the city, what's working and what isn't. You know, and then another attribute would be being able to work with people. I pride myself on getting along with most people, even people I don't agree with, right? So, and I think in city council, you have to have thick skin because people are, you know, you can't make everyone happy. So I think you need to have that thick skin and be able to work with both sides and find that middle ground with people so that we can continue to move forward and not to look back. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad, the next question is your choice, one through 10, not one, two through 10.
We will go with 10.
Ooh. Busting at the seams. As Victoria, with current population of about 11,000, continues to grow, the need for services and the ability to provide those services will challenge the capacity of both City Hall and the Public Works Building. If elected, how would you take steps to ensure that the growing needs of the citizens can be met outside of the constraints of these two buildings? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big concern. I mean, you know, it says right on the Victoria website, right, that we are going to be the biggest city in the county when fully developed. At that rate, you know, traffic is already bad in Victoria, right? And we know that it's being worked on, that, you know, the roads coming into Victoria. I know there was a, the city of Victoria has hired a company to look at the streets within Victoria, and there was a presentation done a couple of months ago, I believe, that had, you know, expanding our roads within the city. We have to look at everything, right? I mean, one of my big things is we need to bring more businesses into Victoria. And if we bring more businesses in and we continue to grow at the rate we're growing, our traffic and all the other things that we have going on are, is not going to get better. We have to look at that right away. We need to make sure that our infrastructure and everything that we have going on can sustain and be applied as we continue to grow in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Mr. Gregory, Tom, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
We are a growing city. It's, it's exciting. It's fun to be part of that. There's always, always different things to look at, but we just recently completed or in the process of completing a space needs assessment. We're looking at the size of City Hall and some of our other facilities, and that's including the library. And as we grow, we're probably going, City Hall is going to take over space in the library, and we'll need to find a new space for that. Infrastructure, huge part of, of growth, and it needs to be managed well. We, as we grow to the south, it looks like we're going to be investing as much as $4 million for water sewer to the south end of our city. Those are big challenges, big decisions that would need to be made. Roads, it's been a, been a huge priority of me or for myself. Even before I made it onto the council, I was reaching out to community leaders such as yourself, former mayor of Chan-Hassan, that was one of my first calls, trying to gain support for, for County Road 18, which is our old 82nd Street. So, and safety, we need to continue to look for ways to keep, keep our roads safe, improving our intersections, improving our crosswalks, and continue to look for ways to diversify our housing as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Gunderson, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
As Victoria, with current population of about 11,000, continues to grow, the need for services and the ability to provide those services will challenge the capacity of both City Hall and the Public Works Building. If elected, how would you take steps to ensure that the growing needs of the citizens can be met outside of the constraints of these two buildings? You have 90 seconds.
Well, as we grow and the constraints outside of the physical buildings of the City Hall and the Public Works Department, our roads are, for me, the biggest, one of the biggest priorities in terms of safety. I live in an area off of 5 and 78th that is being studied right now. And I've seen, I've seen potential presentations on potential solutions to that. And I think it's bringing in input from residents that are also business owners. And I have one in particular. She owns Victoria Rose Floral, and she lives just down the street from the flower shop on the other side of 5. So she commutes every day on 5 on each side. And I think her input would be invaluable on how we help, how we help steer that project moving forward. And then, again, going down 10 to 10 and 11, we take in citizen input and bring it in with the best studies that we do, whether it's, you know, for infrastructure, and then also the parking studies that we do that have been done since probably 2015. And then we bring in the other business owner opinions. That's how we function outside. If we're limited by space on physical buildings without creating new spaces, just making sure we're getting out and keeping the open lines of communication with business owners and the citizens, while getting that information and being able to put out real solutions where 10, 15 years from now, people aren't asking, why did they do it this way? This doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Derek. The next question leads off with Mr. Gregory. Tom, your choice, your number.
What are we at? Is there two left?
Two through nine.
Okay, two. Here we go.
All right. Downtown West, 13 and a half acres. This area just west of downtown seems to be a parcel that is poised for taking off. A plan is being worked on very aggressively by city staff. A Met Council grant application for $2 million was not awarded. This seems to be a critical piece of the future economic development puzzle in Victoria. Here's a question. What is your perspective on the current plan and progress of downtown West? And how would you tweak it or give it a boost if you were elected? You have 90 seconds, Tom.
This has been an amazingly challenging piece of property to develop. We've had a number of developers look at it, and we just haven't been able to get it over the top, to push it forward. You're right, we did apply for the grant for the past two years. Very disappointing that we weren't able to get that grant. It's really going to take some creative work to develop it, and I think we're going to have to develop it in pieces and stages. We're not going to have, be able to do the full-blown infrastructure, which is going to take at least $4 million to get it, to get it started. But we do have developers that are interested, that are at the table. It's just going to take some creativity before we can, before we can break ground on that. But it is challenging, and I, and I think we can get there. It's going to be, I don't want to give up on it. I think there are some people that have thought, you know, it's just not worth it. Let's turn it over to a developer and fill it up with townhomes. I'm really against that idea. I want to look for ways to develop it as, as, as planned, as kind of a mixed-use facility with different types of residential, townhomes, luxury apartment buildings, affordable apartments, all with a mixture of retail on the main level. That is a really exciting project. I want to keep working at it and pushing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, Mr. Roberts. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Downtown West. This area just west of downtown seems to be a parcel that is poised for taking off. A plan is being worked on very aggressively by city staff. A Met Council grant application for $2 million was not awarded. This seems to be a critical piece of the future economic development puzzle in Victoria. What is your perspective on the current plan and progress of downtown West? And how would you tweak it or give it a boost if you were elected? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, thank you. So I mean, I'm all for the expansion, right? But I think we need to do it in a smart way. We, we have a great downtown area the way it is, right? It's, we have great restaurants and bars and some, sorry, some commercial estate, real estate. But what we want to see, you know, it was, we don't want to lose that small-town feel, right? We want to make sure we develop this the right way. And, and as Tom said, right, it's, we're going to probably have to get creative with it. You know, I, I definitely want to see more businesses come in, right? We, like I said, we have great restaurants and bars, but we can't just be a city of restaurants and bars. We have to have more. We have to bring in more businesses that can help bring in more revenue to the city. You know, 80% of our, our revenue comes from, you know, property taxes and franchise fees. We have to take, we have to take the burden off our property tax holders. So if we can get more businesses in, that would be great. You know, I would like to see businesses and, and housing for people of every income level. We need to be, make sure we're inclusive to all people so that we're a destination for, for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Mr. Gunderson, Derek, would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
So I served as vice chair of Victoria's Planning Commission and served on the Planning Commission from 14, from 2014 to 2017. And looking at that 13 and a half acres, the conversation was that we were always talking about it as 13 and a half acres. The conversation was never one or two acres, or three or four acres. That's an option, and should be talked about and maybe studied to see what happens if we have a two-acre parcel that we put infrastructure on and we're able to sell that to a developer who puts a building on that. We've developed the infrastructure the way that we want to. The developer is getting a great piece of land in a great area to put, to put a business, or a business is getting to move in there. And then, as we move into smaller parcels, maybe then we can sell it. That's one option. That's how, I always looked at it that way. We never talked about it that way, but that's an option. Another option is, why aren't we trying to recruit a major employer to, to buy the 13 and a half acres? That's another option. I'm, I'm not in favor of one or the other until we are able to look at all the options that come along or all the things that come along with each of those options. But hanging on to it since the early 2000s hasn't worked for us. Trying to sell it to a developer as 13 and a half acres hasn't worked for one reason or another, whether it's a recession or we get into infighting on how we should do it within, within the city ourselves. So I think kind of expanding our ideas of what the 13 and a half acres looks like and how it gets developed is going to be the important thing. And it, just making sure we're getting that feedback so that it's a useful solution moving forward.
All right, thank you. Our next question, your choice, Mr. Roberts, three through nine.
Well, let's go six.
Orderly annexation. In 1976, Victoria and Lake Town Township agreed to an orderly annexation. That plan remains in place, though little, if any, annexation has taken place thus far. Victoria Council has had interest in the township land south of town to County Road 10. Here's your question. What is your position on the annexation of a portion of Lake Town Township into Victoria city boundaries? And if you support it, how would you propose to make it happen? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, so I will say, you know, that's, that's definitely something that we have to look into. I can't say right now whether I support or I don't support that. It's important that we talk to the people and understand where they're coming from, whether they want to be brought in or not, and, and from a feasibility standpoint, right? You know, what will it cost the city? What will we, how will we handle, you know, this annexation? You know, and again, right, we, we have to work together, and we have to work with the people of Victoria and the people of Lake Town Township to, to make sure this is the right thing for both the city and them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chad. Mr. Gunderson, Derek, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
All right. In 1976, Victoria and Lake Town Township agreed to an orderly annexation. That plan remains in place, though little, if any, annexation has taken place thus far. Victoria Council has had interest in the township land south of town to County Road 10. What is your position on the annexation of a portion of Lake Town Township into Victoria boundaries? And if you support it, how would you propose to make it happen? You have 90 seconds.
Well, you know, the agreement's been there, and the agreement is there. I think we, we evaluate what's changed since 1976. That's an agreement that's older than I am, and I turned 40 this year, right? So I think we need to evaluate the agreement that's in place. I believe the goal for us is to continue to grow down towards 10 and 11, down towards County Road 10. So I think we've, we've put in a road on Marsh Lake Road, which will affect that area that we just put in at considerable cost to the taxpayers. And I think as that comes in, I think it's going to be, I think the, the county also has this planned as going that way and becoming the largest community in the county in, over the next 30 years, at least not to the projections that they were, but certainly larger than any of the other cities based on the potential for our growth. So it's just evaluating that, that current agreement, moving it to an agreement that works for, by today's standards, and how it fits in with our planning process, our own 30-year plan, and what we're going to do, how we're going to replan if we don't do it, if we don't go down that road. So what are we going to do? But otherwise, I would need more information on what the alternative is if we don't do it.
All right, thank you, Derek. Mr. Gregory, Tom, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thanks. That's okay.
Ready? 90 seconds.
Annexation for Lake Town Township as, primarily as we move south, as Derek mentioned, we just completed Marsh Lake Road. That was a big piece to the puzzle. But our, our philosophy towards the annexation, we aren't trying to force the issue at all. We've always left it up to landowners to decide when they want to sell their property and be annexed into Victoria. We're not forcing the issue. So it's always been landlord-owner driven. And we also have a model that, that's kind of based on a growth of about 111 houses per year, and we need to maintain that, and we need to make sure we have buildable lots. So annexation to the south is, is really critical, and we need to maintain that. And we will. We have developers at the table right now looking at a fairly large parcel. We call it the Meat Cutter Property. And once they make that, that decision to, to move forward on that, the landowner will sell it, and the developer, we will apply for annexation. It will be, it's, it's a smooth process. We're not going to force the issue, but annexation is critical. And that's all part of the whole plan. As we move south, the goal is to get far enough south, all the way to Inglis Boulevard, to start developing our commercial retail office area, which is going to be critical to, as far as the diversification. to, as far as the diversification of our, our tax base. So thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Our next question begins with Mr. Gunderson. You have three, four, five, seven, eight, and nine. Derek, choice.
Let's go eight.
Victoria, most populous in Carver County? Given likely trends and anticipated land available, Victoria and Carver could be the most populous cities in Carver County by 2050 or 2060. Would you agree with those projections? And if so, what are some key steps that need to take place in the next four years to pave the way for responsible growth in this community? You have 90 seconds.
Well, yes, I, I think it's perfectly feasible that Victoria and Carver could continue the trends in growth. And I had a conversation recently with someone who works in the mortgage industry who sees what we're going through now a little different than what we went through in the early 2000s. So he doesn't see the, the financial issues that are happening as a barrier to our development, which is a good thing. He, he sees that people with the change, changing in habits for working and coming home, that people may still, may be changing their habits and buying bigger homes because they're offing out of their homes now, at least for the next year or two. For us, that's a good thing because we'll be able to continue developing on the, on the numbers that Mr. Gregory talked about on the, on the plan, 110, 111 homes a year to, to keep us going. But with that, we also need to start adding the amenities and the commercial base to that, to be able to maintain some of this. We can't be dependent 100% on residential, on 100% residential communities. We need our, our commercial and our business communities to take that next step as well. And the 13 and a half acres is one thing. Infrastructure development down, down toward, down, down the south is another direction. It's going to be again, landowner, you know, it's landowner driven, market driven. It's going to be something that the community has to get behind as we get down to 10 and 11. So yes, certainly feasible.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question? I'd be happy to.
I think I'm okay. I agree. I, I think we are going to be the most populous city in Carver County, which is both exciting and somewhat daunting. Traffic is going to be a huge issue. I have been lobbying everybody I can speak to about building 82nd Street. That is the only project that will take traffic off of Highway 5. Highway 5 is currently, it's designed for 14,000 cars a day. Currently today, we have 27,000 cars. It looks as if we're going to be able to get that grant. The county feels confident that we're going to get a grant, but that grant only improves Highway 5 from County Road 13 to County Road 17, which will be great. It'll improve intersections. We'll get a stoplight at County Road 17 in conjunction with a new entrance into the Arboretum. So that's going to help that issue out a great deal. But then we're still going to end up with a bottleneck that goes back down to two lanes right before 41. So we need to get, we need to get some traffic off of Highway 5. 82nd Street is going to be the answer to that. Again, we need to diversify our housing, keep looking for ways to add commercial and we're going to get there when we put that infrastructure in to the south. It's going to be a big prop, that's going to be a big advantage to our city. But we're going to keep building different kind of houses, housing stock, and we will manage it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Roberts, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Happy to. Given likely trends and anticipated land available, Victoria and Carver could be the most populous cities in Carver County by 2050 or 2060. Would you agree with those projections? And if so, what are some key steps that need to take place in the next four years to pave the way for responsible growth in this community? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, I mean, based off of how we're growing now, I mean, like Derek and Tom said, yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't seem surprising that we could be the biggest city in 30 years. So I mean, it's all going to be about infrastructure, right? Roads, yes, they're fixing or planning on hopefully eventually widening 5 coming in from Chan Hassen, but you know, we need to take care of our own, our roads in the city of Victoria so that they can handle the amount of traffic that we want when we have, you know, more residents coming into the city and also hopefully bringing in more commercial properties, right? If we want people to come in and we want people to come to our businesses, we have to have the ability to control that traffic. Right now, it's already bad when you want to come in, you know, off of 11 and you want to turn, go towards Waconia, you know, we, you already see back, way backs up way of traffic or coming in from Waconia, you see a backup of traffic. We have to get a handle on our infrastructure. And then, you know, we, as they, others said, we need to expand our business base. Off of 10 and 11, that's a great spot for whether it be office buildings or, you know, you know, for warehouses or whatever, right? If we can get a big business in to help bring in more workers and, and help the tax base, that would be a boon to the city. We, we just, we can't put, keep putting the burden on our property tax holders, our homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Our next question, first answer is Mr. Gregory. Tom, choose a number.
Number three.
Immediate attention. I've heard about various issues from Victoria residents over the last few days. They are wondering what you believe are the key topics to address? So the question is, what are the two to three hot topics that you feel will need to be addressed within the next year? And briefly, how would you tackle them? You have 90 seconds.
Downtown parking. Lots and lots of people want to talk about downtown parking. This is, this is one of those difficult balancing acts that we all need to try to work out. If we, if we reach too far and we have too much parking, that takes away from retail space. So, so there's a delicate balance. There's a property we call the Lightner Property, which is just to the west of Rose Street. I think that's going to be key for, to, key for, for controlling and solving some of our downtown parking problems. We'll never solve it completely, but I've been a big advocate for developing that Lightner Property and partnering up with, with developers to create shared space for downtown parking. I think that's going to be, that's, that's one of our, our major goals. And I'm not opposed to TIF for doing that. TIF has been a hot button issue, but I think TIF is going to be needed to create that partnership. Other areas, again, it's, it, it comes down to diversifying our, our tax base. We've got 95% of our tax base is coming from residential housing. We have to keep working to diversify that and, and grow our commercial retail space, find businesses that can come here, make, get some good paying jobs. Those are all going to be really key issues to focus on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Roberts, Chad, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
I've heard about various issues from Victoria residents over the last few days. They are wondering what you believe are the key topics to address? So what are the two or three hot topics that you feel will need to be addressed in the next year? And briefly, how would you tackle them? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but obviously, you know, the traffic issue is going to be a, a big, should be a big topic, right? Traffic is already bad coming into Victoria, going through Victoria. We need to get a handle on that if we're going to want to keep expanding our residence, residents and our commercial base. Also, although the, the council does not have a hand in the schools, you know, I'm sure there will be a referendum again and we need to speak up and about and support our schools. It was a hot button topic the last time and it ended up turning into more about equity than it did about the schools. And what we need to do, we, we need to understand that we're, we need to support our schools and I will speak up for the schools, right? I, right, if I have a problem with the schools, I'm not going to make it political. I will reach out to, whether it's to the school board members or administrators within the school, but we need to support our schools because now that our referendum did not pass, we're seeing a lot of blowback and a lot of things that did not go well are going well for our schools now. And yeah, we need, we just, we need to support our schools and our residents need to know where our, the council stands on those things. And for me, you, the schools will always have my support. Thank you.
Chad. Mr. Gunderson, Derek, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it. Thanks.
All right. You have 90 seconds.
So the, I answered these three questions, this question in my three points, the, in my Chan profile, in the Chan newspaper profile, setting the groundwork or planning for growth is something, and I mean, planning, not the growth itself. I mean, we need to set the plan down. We need to make sure we have a coherent plan that people are on board with. That's from our commissions to our staff, to the liaisons that we have to work with, with DOT, with Lake Town, with the county, with CHSCA, whomever it may be. Then making sure we're staying on top of our fiscal responsibilities, our AAA bond rating, making sure we're keeping that while it doesn't mean a whole lot more than we're able to borrow money cheaper. We need to keep it. It's a, it's a feather in our cap and it's something to hang our hat on because we are good and previous councils have been good and city management has been good at keeping our fiscal response, fiscal items in order. In the near term, in the year, I bet residents would love to see us make some progress on parking as well. Those would be the top three, making progress on parking downtown. And it's an immediate parking problem. It's not like we have people walking, you know, two miles away. It's an immediate, you can't park outside the building that you want to go to. But making some progress on parking, I think, would take some pressure off of residents that, that they may be feeling over other things and it comes out saying, I can't park right where I want to park. But I think if we make progress on that, that's, those three things over the next year, that'll be a good start.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Our next question, Chad, you get first choice on this. Four, five, seven, or nine? COVID pandemic and return to normal. This COVID era has caught many of us off guard as it relates to jobs, education, healthcare prevention, independent business prosperity, personal isolation and mental health issues. What can the Victoria City Council do to help the citizens and businesses of this community bounce back from the depths in which we find ourselves? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, that's a tough question. I mean, it's hard to know what we can do. You know, I think, I think, one, the city council did a good job by allowing our restaurants and businesses to use some of our streets, right, for a more additional outdoor seating. Obviously, that was a big help during the nicer months when people could sit outside and eat. You know, I, I really think communication has to be key, right? We got to talk to our business owners, whether it's, you know, maybe we try and get meetings with business owners once a month or twice a month and hearing from them about what the city can do to help them. You know, talking to our residents and, and having an open line of communication for people so that if they need help or if they need, you know, whether it's mental health help or if it's financial help, like what, what can the city do, right? I know there's a lot of state options, right, like for small business owners and, you know, and for people who are out of work. But, you know, the city can be there as, you know, a helping hand hopefully and hopefully just listen, right? But the key is, right, if our businesses don't thrive, our city isn't going to thrive. We have to make sure our businesses can stay going in these difficult times and that's just supporting our businesses to, you know, if you can't go inside, you get takeout once a week, right? So that we help those people that need those, that money coming in. But again, I think communication is key and hopefully having an open line dialogue with business owners. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Mr. Gunderson, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes.
This COVID era has caught many of us off guard as it relates to jobs, education, healthcare and prevention, independent business prosperity, personal isolation and mental health issues. What can the Victoria City Council do to help the citizens and businesses of this community bounce back from the depths in which we find ourselves? You have 90 seconds.
Yes, I want, first of all, everybody to know, within the community, we're all in this together. While some may feel the effects of the pandemic worse than others, we're all in this together. We're all going through this together, right? So asking one business what's working for them, you can't apply it to another business because it may not work for them. So making sure that we're in communication with our businesses, whether it's a restaurant or a flower shop or a microbrewery or a retail clothing shop, we need to know what's working for them, what's getting people in the door at a safe, at a, at a, at a socially safe distances, but, or what's helping their bottom line through this. Once we come through it, we're, and we can put all, we can get back to what our, we think what our normal was. I hopefully, hopefully we can compare notes with everybody and say, this worked and we can come up with a game plan that if we ever experience something like this or whomever experiences something like this again, they're able to react better than we were and not feel so caught off guard. As Chair of the Carver County Mental Health Advisory Council, we're always looking at how one program works for one individual and how it works for another individual and whether it's being effective. And so solutions that we have have to be effective across the board for the businesses. That doesn't mean we apply the same rules to the same, to different businesses. You have to look at what's working for individual businesses and develop a plan to make them successful. And how that works, it's just bringing people together to understand and that's either by Zoom or by phone call.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Gregory, Tom, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thanks.
Okay.
COVID has been tough on everybody. It's, it's such a challenging, challenging environment for everything and certainly the city of Victoria is no different. I think we've had really good response towards, towards our downtown businesses. We immediately turned over control to our city manager to make on-the-spot type decisions. We gave her pretty much carte blanche decision-making and she put in, put in place the Eat Street 2020, which allowed business owners to set up tents in parking areas, which, which helped. Those are small things. Just providing resources. Our fire chief, Andrew Hager, has been a great resource along with our city manager, Dana, Dana Hardy, provide, giving, giving resource and answers to, to local residents. I know also the county's been very instrumental in, in helping people with rent assistance and that type of thing. Our rec center has taken a big hit. We've lost a lot of revenue. Those are going to be difficult things to try to replace, but I think we're going to get through it. It's, it's going to take some time. There's just no magic bullet to fix this problem. It's going to go away. Our farmer's market was surprisingly a big success even, even during this pandemic. So.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Our next question, Derek, this is your choice. Four, five, or nine?
Let's go five.
Economic development. Recent discussions at both the council and community levels have focused on long-term growth and development, economic development, attracting and retaining businesses. What role does the city council and members specifically play in promoting the development of the community? And what tools would you use to attract the right businesses? In your view, what are the key positives that make Victoria a prime target for new investment? That's a lot of questions to answer. Do your best. You have 90 seconds.
You know, I've got a master's in public administration, so it's all about, through my program, the, the string was finding the right tool for the job, right? What's the right tool for, for a job? Well, if we're, it depends on what we're trying, what we want for Victoria. My role as a councilman will be to be the biggest cheerleader for the city of Victoria that I can be so that I'm representing us with enthusiasm, so that I'm representing us with pride, so that I'm responsibly representing us to the outside, to everybody outside of Victoria, potential employers, residents, businesses, new, new small businesses. Moving forward, how do we find the right tools? What are we going to support it with? Well, we've got, we use TIF every now and again. Judicious use of TIF has proven to be effective in Victoria. It's helped us redevelop some places that we might not have otherwise been able to do. It's been able to add some parking, but it's not always the right answer. So it's also making sure that we're finding the right opportunities and taking advantage of them. If a developer comes in and says, I want to do this on your 13 and a half acres, we have to make sure we jump on that because over the last 15 years, that has not been the case, but we have to be prepared for that. fifteen years, that has not been the case. But we have to be prepared for that. And we also have to be prepared to to continue to for applying for grants. We lose some grants and in that that's the way it is. We just have to keep at it, keep applying and keep going after it. And over time, we'll start to win some of those things and then maybe over time, we won't need to apply for the grants. But it's just making sure we're selecting the right tools for the right projects.
All right. Thank you, Derek. Mr. Gregory, you're next to answer. Allow me to read the question, okay?
Okay.
So I'll focus you. What role does the city council and members specifically play in promoting the development of the community? What tools would you use to attract the right businesses? And in your view, what are the key positives that make Victoria a prime target for new investment? You have ninety seconds.
Just our demographics. We're actually a pretty wealthy community. I think that that in and of itself is attractive to many types of developers, but we're always looking for ways to to promote and sell Victoria. Bouncing off of ideas, off of our, off of our business community. One, one thought was to put up a reader type board or electronic board on the east end of our city, trying to promote different events, those types of things. We also reached out to a consultant firm to help us guide the area to the south, which I keep referring to as our our small area plan, which was to develop the retail, the commercial area. We put together a committee or a commission and that was made up of business owners and residents. And what came out of that is they reached out to a number of different developers, real estate agents, and we've gotten some good feedback on that. But all of that is is pending on whether or not we can get the infrastructure down there. So we're always looking for ways to to partner with whoever we can to be good cheerleaders for Victoria.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Roberts, Chad, you're next. Let me repeat this question, okay? What role does the city council and members specifically play in promoting the development of the community? And what tools would you use to attract the right businesses? In your view, what are the key positives that make Victoria a prime target for new investment? You have ninety seconds, Chad.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, Victoria is a great place, right? And as Tom said, right, we tend to be a more wealthy community. So businesses should want to come into our city. I do think, you know, we do need to become a more inclusive and diverse community, which will help bring more business in businesses in as well. Over the last year, we've seen a lot of divisiveness in the city, things that were said by our mayor at at city council meetings. That does not help bring in developers. That does not help bring in businesses. They do not want a community that is divisive, right? And I don't think Victoria is a divisive community, but when things are said at city council meetings that that are divisive, you're representing the city. And so I I will not be divisive. I will, I want to be our city to be a more inclusive and divisive city, sorry, a more inclusive and diverse city. And in that, in doing that, we will be able to bring in more businesses. Businesses will come because we have the money in the city for businesses to want to come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. On a personal note, I'm a big fan of Wednesday night car shows, by the way. All right. Mr. Gregory, you have our ninth question, just two remain. You you have the final choice between four and nine.
I'll take number four.
Number four. During the past few months, we have heard an increasing call from all segments of our society that decades and centuries of systemic racism and social injustice must end. The question, what role does the Victoria City Council have in addressing the issues of racial and ethnic disparity in law enforcement, housing, employment, education, and other areas that contribute to quality of life? And what is your personal role in this action? You have ninety seconds, Tom.
First of all, racism has no place in our community, no place in this state and no place anywhere. It needs to be called out wherever wherever it's seen. Our ability to diversify, we 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 reach out to anybody we can. We're looking for, we're always looking for ways to diversify people within our city hall, people that are employed by the city, people that make up our committees and commissions. We always, we are, are always looking for ways to be more welcoming and inclusive for those. As far as the school district goes, very much supportive of equity type programs. Equity doesn't have to be all about race. It's it's making sure all students feel safe and welcome in that environment. And we will continue to promote those as much as we can.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Gunderson, you're next. Derek, would you like me to repeat the question? During the past few months, we have heard an increasing call from all segments of our society that decades and centuries of systemic racism and social injustice must end. What role does the Victoria City Council have in addressing the issues of racial and ethnic disparity in law enforcement, housing, employment, education, and other areas that contribute to quality of life? And what is your personal role in this action? You have ninety seconds.
My personal role is as it is with my friends that may experience something that have gone, that we've seen play out in the news over and over again. And that's just to be there for them, to be in the open ear for them to air their grievances, but also to be there with them, to do what it is they need to do, feel they want to have done. Someone who's never really experienced it, I don't know what their background is. So all I can do is be there for them and take their advice on what they think is best for them. So I'll apply that rule to any community member that may be experiencing whatever it is that they may be going through when it comes to racism or inequity or whatever. From the city's standpoint, it's to make sure that we are open and inclusive, that we are looking at our commissions to make sure, are we, do we have the best representation of the city of Victoria? Do we have the best qualified individuals that that are there? Do we have people that want to be there? Do we reach out to people that we don't currently have? Absolutely. We have some great business owners. We have some, you know, I've said, we've got great business owners. We've got great doctors. We've got great educators. All live in Victoria. Some of these same people are people of color and have come from different backgrounds. Certainly should be reached out to, to make sure that we're bringing their opinions, their points of view, their experiences into the community so that we can make the best Victoria possible.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Roberts, Chad, may I repeat the question for you?
Please.
During the past few months, we have heard an increasing call from all segments of our society that decades and centuries of systemic racism and social injustice must end. What role does the Victoria City Council have in addressing the issues of racial and ethnic disparity in law enforcement, housing, employment, education, and other areas that contribute to quality of life? And what is your personal role in this action? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, so this issue is pretty near and dear to my heart. For those of you who don't know, my wife and I adopted our son from Ethiopia and brought him home when he was one years old. He is currently just about going to be twelve tomorrow, so so he's been home for a long time. So this is, this is an important topic to me. You know, we we need to speak up, right? If you do nothing, you're part of the problem, right? So if we see racism and inequity, we need to speak up for those who are being targeted. Within the city, I mean, we can do lots of things, right? We, right, we need to continue to build, have housing for every income level, right? So it doesn't matter whether you're white, black, or brown, right? We need to have housing for every income level so that we, every family who wants to move to Victoria can, you know, and then we just, again, we need to speak up and not let these injustices happen. And it's, you know, as the city, people look to us as representation, representation of the city. And if we speak up and out against these things and allow people to know that it's, these things aren't right, you know, it will hopefully trickle out around to the rest of the city. You know, as Tom said, equity is not just about race. It's right, it's about getting people what they need and that and that's what it is. So thank you.
Thank you, Chad. And we wish your son a happy birthday to him.
Thank you.
Our last question, Mr. Gunderson, you get to, you don't get to choose, but you get to answer it first. You want number nine, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Law enforcement and policing. Like most cities in Carver County, Victoria contracts with the Carver County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement. Law enforcement in general has been under scrutiny of late due to the impact of violent protests versus peaceful assemblies, calls for defunding police and protecting our citizens' safety. What is your perspective on the contract policing arrangement with the county? And what changes might you suggest to the way law enforcement is handled in Victoria? You have ninety seconds.
Law enforcement in Victoria, contract based, I don't see any need to change the current setup. I think we just got to fully staffed on a twenty-four hour cycle, being from being staffed on a, I think, a semi-eight hour to sixteen hour schedule prior. So I think now we're fully staffed. As we grow, I think reevaluation, how many officers we have within the the community are going to be important. I think the the things that we're going through with Covid and some of the mental health, I think we have to watch out for some of the drunken driving and we have to watch out for some of the local abuse. You know, we have to find out where the calls are happening. Are they happening at the the apartment complex that's downtown? Or they are the, are they being called more to to VIX or some at some of the bars later at night? Where are the problems actually at? Because, I mean, let's face it, Victoria is not exactly the crime hub of many, many communities. So there aren't too many real issues when it comes to hardcore policing. The deputies that I've met and had the pleasure of talking with are great people and they they treat, from my experience and my friends' experiences, treat people with the respect that they're due. So I, you know, I can only speak to from what, from my experiences and they've all been positive. So as we grow, reevaluating the contract, certainly something we're going to need to do, but not certainly from a defunding standpoint, but from a, we're growing, how do we deal with it standpoint?
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Roberts, Chad, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Like most cities in Carver County, Victoria contracts with Carver County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement. Law enforcement in general has been under scrutiny of late due to the impact of violent protests versus peaceful assemblies, calls for defunding police and protecting our citizens' safety. What is your perspective on the contract policing arrangement with the county? And what changes might you suggest to the way law enforcement is handled in Victoria? You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, first of all, I I support our police officers. I mean, I think they have one of, if not the hardest jobs, you know, around, right? I mean, they're putting themselves in danger, you know, potentially all the time. So, you know, I, but there is obviously, there has been a problem with police violence and and racism in some, in some cases. And so obviously, that needs to be looked at and we need to take care of and and remove those police officers that have have done those wrong things. But I do believe that the majority of police officers do the right thing and are good people. You know, it was it comes to specifically the contract with Victoria that Victoria has with the Carver County. You know, again, I agree with Derek. At this point, I think that contract has worked. You know, I know there was, you know, an influx in stealing of mail within the city of Victoria, you know, this year. But I think in general, that's worked. But obviously, that's going to be something that has to be continued to be looked at, you know, whether it's yearly or or whatever, because, you know, we've talked about it already, right? Victoria is supposed to become the biggest city in Carver County, you know, in thirty or forty years or whatever. So at some point, it may be necessary for Victoria to have their own police force if, you know, we continue to grow the way that we expect us to. So but right now, I think, you know, our Carver County Sheriff's Office does a great job and I'm supportive of them. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chad. Mr. Gregory, would you like me to repeat the question, Tom?
That's okay.
All righty. Ninety seconds.
We in Victoria, we are really fortunate. Our city manager, Dana Hardy, came from Burnsville, where she was an assistant manager, and part of, one of her duties over there was 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 reworking the police contract. So she's somewhat of a local expert regarding that. And she went through our our contract with a fine tooth comb and she made some very important changes to that contract. But obviously, policing is 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 first and foremost upfront after the incident with with George Floyd, it's just a true, really a tragic situation. But very much in favor of of training, de-escalation, that type of thing. Kind of a knee jerk reaction is, oh, we got to put cameras on on all of our police. It's a good idea, but there's a lot that comes with that and a lot of policies and procedures need to be in place and that's going to take time. I think we're going to get there. Carver County will start adding cameras, but that's going to take time because it's not just something that you could just, you can just do. There's, there's a ton of things that have to be considered. When do the cameras turn on? When do they turn off? For which situations are they on all the time? Who gets to view those videos? So there's a lot to work out. But we're getting there and we're fortunate to have Dana Hardy and a local expert on that issue.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Well, that concludes our question segment. We're now going to move into closing statements. And first is Mr. Roberts. Chad, you begin. Ninety seconds.
All right. Thank you again, Denny and Eric, for coordinating the forum today. I also want to thank my wife, Kate, and my kids, Mamush and Scarlett, for supporting me during this campaign. Who knew we could have so much fun folding papers, stuffing mailers, and walking neighborhoods to drop off literature? Thank you to my supporters. Without you, there is no campaign. There is, there is no potential for winning a seat on the council. I am humbled and honored that you trusted me to represent you on the city council. To those of you who are still unsure about who you will vote for, thank you for watching. I hope this was informative and worthwhile for you. Before you decide whom you're voting for, I want you to take a look at what your values are and how you want Victoria to look in the future. I am someone who is willing to stand up and fight alongside our schools. I am someone who wants more businesses to come to Victoria so we can take some of the burden off our property owners. I am someone who wants to see more businesses and housing opportunities for people of every income level. I am someone who wants to see our city become even more inclusive because a more inclusive and diverse city, it creates more opportunities for everyone. I am someone who believes in the good in people. Even after everything that has happened in the last year, I still believe the majority of people have good intentions and want all people to thrive. I hope on November third, our values align and I will have earned your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Tom Gregory, you're next. Tom, ninety seconds.
Again, thank you, Denny and Eric, for putting this on and thank you, Chad and Derek, for your willingness to serve. Residents of Victoria, the state of our city is awesome. I believe our city hall is in better shape today than at any time during my adult life. We have a first-rate city manager in Dana Hardy and she has surrounded herself with good and talented people. The members on our committees and commissions are amazing people and they're doing fantastic work. During my time on the council, I have developed many great relationships with many residents, business owners, county commissioners, representatives from the Minnehaha Creek watershed district, and representatives at St. Paul. These relationships take time to develop and these relationships are crucial in creating partnerships with various groups and other government entities which will keep Victoria vibrant, welcoming, and prosperous. There's a huge learning curve with this job and if reelected, I will be the senior member on this council with only four years of experience. I'm grateful to the residents of Victoria for allowing me to serve and I hope to have an opportunity to build on this experience. Victoria is an awesome community to live, work, and play, and I just want to do my part to make it even better. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Tom. Derek, you get closing remarks.
Well, thanks, Denny. Thanks, Eric, Tom, and Eric, Chad. Sorry. I just, I want to say, it comes down to being enthusiastic, being able to understand the issues, and being passionate about the solutions that you're providing to people. What I've talked about tonight, it's going to take time to establish the relationships. It's going to take effort to establish the relationships and it's going to take a bunch of energy and a bunch of people to continue and maintain those relationships if we want Victoria to go if we want Victoria to go and grow the way that we want it to. I'm committed to doing that. I have been since I moved into Victoria in 2013. I've served, I started serving on the planning commission in 2014. I've been passionate not only about our community and our city, but about our county, serving two terms as Chair of the Mental Health Advisory Committee. I bring the experience people want, but I also have the, the ability and the willingness to put in the work that needs to be done. Hopefully, if you haven't already voted, November 3rd, you'll vote for me and, and give some of these other good candidates their due consideration. With that, I hope everybody's staying safe, able to find a little bit of mental health breaks here and there where they can, and enjoying the golf football tonight.
Thank you, Derek. Well, thank you to each of you for your well-crafted and well-thought-out answers. I believe the, the residents of Victoria have a good decision in front of them in the options that they have for city council. I also want to thank you for participating today and for your willingness to step into the arena of public service, a very noble, a noble goal. I also want to say thanks to Eric Margolis for his help, not only his timer, but also for coordinating the forum. And a special thank you to Carver County Administration for accommodating this event at this location. And most importantly, a special thanks to you, the Victoria resident, the voters, that are watching this town hall forum. We hope that this event has helped you as you prepare to vote for Victoria City Council candidates this fall. Remember, early voting is in place already in Carver County. You can visit the Carver County website for instructions on early voting. And I think it's too late to get your absentee ballot, but vote, if you haven't voted already, vote on Election Day, November 3rd. Thank you, and good afternoon.